March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. There's two members that will be joining us remotely. Member Covino and Member, uh, Member Natola. As such, all votes will be taken via roll call.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Um, and Pemba?
Yes.
Uh, Member Natola, I don't see her yet. And Members Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the planning board as a hybrid meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order in March twelfth, two thousand twenty, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code thirty A, Section twenty, and extended by Chapter twenty-two, the Acts of two thousand twenty-two, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March the third verse, two thousand twenty-three.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but please note, while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the hearing will not be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Those seeking to participate should, um, should, with specific interest on an item, should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Um, you can find our meeting on, um, you go to townofburlingtonwebax.com. The meeting number is two three three eight, three five seven five, five eight four one. Um, you can also join us by phone at six one seven, three one five, zero seven, zero four. Um, I just noticed that Member Natola is here with us. Welcome, Member Natola. Um, you can watch the virtual broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast ninety-nine, RCN fifteen, and Verizon forty-one in the Town of Burlington. It's also streamed on BCAT Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Great, thank you, Liz. Uh, we have some items being continued off tonight's agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to take a motion to take Item six I out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Uh, LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Natola? I see her saying yes. And Sutherland?
Yes.
Item I is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point six point ten. Restaurants of the zoning bylaws, seventy-five Middlesex Turnpike, AKA Burlington Mall. FRC Balance LLC, Doing Businesses True Food Kitchen, is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of April sixth at the request of the applicant's attorney in an email dated March ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Um, and Pemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Members Sutherland?
Yes.
Um, just a quick note on that one. Um, we did receive a letter from the applicant and their attorney. Um, today they're actually requesting withdrawal because it's already on, um, the agenda for tonight as a continuance. We're continuing it, but next meeting it will be withdrawn, will request withdrawal without prejudice. So just an update.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Understood, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to take Items seven J, seven K, seven L, seven M, and seven N together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Um, Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
Vice Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Item J is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point four. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine, and physics of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue. AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item K is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point four point one. Life science laboratories engage in research, prototype manufacture, experimental testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life system technologies, environmental and biomedical devices. Bio safety level four BL four laboratories defined by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention are prohibited in Burlington, the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue. AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Uh, Item L is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point four point two. Life science laboratories engage in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems, technologies, environmental biomedical devices. Bio safety level four BL four laboratories, as defined by the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, which are prohibited in Burlington of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue. AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item M is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point nine. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue. AP Terry LLC is the applicant. Item N is a continued public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section four point two point seven point eleven. Generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator. VSQG of the zoning bylaws, twenty-two Terry Avenue. AP Terry LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting of May fourth, two thousand twenty-three at the request of the applicant's attorney in an email dated March seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Steph, I think that we should go back, record, or take the verbiage of J through N. So during that meeting, we don't have to do that.
I just hit play. I just hit play.
Just move forward. You think? Um, let's move on to announcements.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, we have, um, early voting for the townwide election, which, um, began March fifteenth. Um, and it's through March thirty-first, and you can do that, um, during regular office hours at the town clerk's office. Um, and townwide election is on April first from eight AM to eight PM, and that you can, the polling places, the Burlington High School. Um, the ZBRC signed bylaws subcommittee will be having a meeting on March twentieth at five thirty PM via Zoom. The Conservation Commission is meeting on March twenty-third at six thirty, um, here. Um, and we will be hosting, um, the Blanchard Wheeler Visioning Plan, um, public meeting. It's the second public meeting, um, that we had, um, on the project that we're currently working on, um, looking at complete streets and, um, creating, you know, bike lanes, walking, and, um, different means of transportation along that order. Um, so that's going to be on April twenty-sixth from six PM to seven thirty PM via Microsoft Teams.
Great. Um, does anyone have any other announcements?
I have a little one. Um, I'm just excited to tell everyone that I am going to be moderating a meet and greet with local author Nikki Cadillac on Saturday at the library at three PM. She's written a fabulous book that all of you should read, and you should come on Saturday at three to hear about it. And, um, you can get signed copies of the book and ask questions.
What's the name of the book?
It is called When We Were Mothers.
Great, thank you.
Um, someone else, honey?
Have anything else they'd like to share?
Okay. Um, Madam Chair?
Oh, sorry. One second. I'm just looking at the agenda. It's saying A through H. The numbers are J, I mean, the letters are J through Q. Which is accurate.
It's A through H.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items A through H together, seven A through seven H together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Uh, Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Here we go. Here we go, folks. Item A is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to twelve point one point five. PD special permit requirements of the zoning bylaws, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant. Item B is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point one. Light manufacturing or processing plants of the New England Executive Park Plan Development. PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development, applicant. Um, Public, Item C is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point two. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental, and testing activities, but not limited to the fields of bio, biology, chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, medicine, and physics subject to the planning board making the findings of course in Section eight point three point seven point four of the zoning bylaws. And subject to the applicable rules and regulations of the Board of Health of the New England Executive Park Plan Development. PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant. Item D is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point four. Hazardous and toxic material, chemicals, use, storage, transport, disposal, or discharge of the New England Executive Park Plan Development. PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant. Uh, Item E is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point five. Generation or storage of hazardous waste limited to the volumes classified as a very small quantity generator of the New England Executive Park Plan Development. PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three hundred, uh, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant. Item F is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point twelve. Biotechnology research, development, manufacturing in the fields of biotechnology, medical, pharmaceutical, uh, pharmaceutical, physical, biological, and behavioral sciences and technology, environmental science, tox, uh, toxicology, genetic engineering, comparative medicine, bioengineering, cell biology, human and animal nutrition, including the production of equipment, apparatus, machines, and devices for research, development, manufacturing, and, and advance and practical application in any such field or area, and including office administration and support facilities to rate, related to any of the foregoing activities of the New England Executive Park Plan, Plan Development, PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant. Item G is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to five point seven. Discharges from man-made structures into the municipal zone wetlands of the New England Executive Park Plan Development. PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant. Item H is a public hearing. Application for approval of a special permit pursuant to six point sixteen. Storage of oils and fuels, petroleum products, including storage for onsite heating purposes and landscaping maintenance equipment in excess of fifty gallons of the New England Executive Park Plan Development, PD District Bylaw Provisions, zero, one hundred, three fifty, six hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-four hundred. District Avenue, National Development is the applicant.
Hi, folks. Wow.
I, uh, I always feel so guilty when you have to. Appreciate, uh, doing that.
I do think we should start recording this so we can just.
This one will save us time.
So, uh, pleased to be before you all tonight for the record attorney, Mark Vaughn, with Reimer Bronstein representing, uh, the applicant, uh, National Development in connection with the various permit applications that have been submitted for the, the property, commonly known as the district, uh, in Burlington, uh, formerly known as New England Executive Park, I think, as you all know. So, um, we had a, a bit of a, a slide deck that we were going to walk through that we thought might be very helpful in terms of what this, uh, project entails. And, uh, we're going to try not to put you to sleep with it, uh, but knowing that this is the only item on your agenda, we, we, we wanted to get through it. And, uh, if your eyes start glazing over, obviously, then just, you know, Caleb, uh, give me a whack. We can speed it up.
Yeah.
But, um, so here, talking about the district and basically, uh, what this involves is a modified master plan from what was previously approved by the board, uh, several years ago. But, uh, if you could go to the next slide, um, just. Yep. Great, so, uh, just briefly introduce the, the folks that are here, part of the, the project team. So, uh, Katie Snyder, to my right, is, uh, with National Development, the, the proud owners and stewards of the, the property, uh, at the district. Uh, along with, uh, Ashlyn Kerr, who is, uh, with National Development as, as well, who's here tonight. Uh, myself, uh, with Reimer Bronstein and Melissa Cushing of our office has been assisting as well through the permit applications and whatnot. Uh, we have a couple of folks here from VHB. Eric Gerard, civil engineer, and Vinod Kalakiri, uh, traffic engineer, both of whom are with VHB. And they've been involved with the district since the inception of the PDD zoning back, uh, two thousand nine. Uh, David Munfredi and Brian Rossler, who are architects with Elkes Munfredi, uh, very well-known, highly-regarded architectural firm based in Boston that have been, uh, involved with this property and overall redevelopment, uh, through the years. And Chris Jones, who is a landscape architect with IBI Group. And you may remember, uh, Chris from before, but he had extensive involvement, uh, the last time that we were working through, um, the different phases of the, the district redevelopment. And a couple of other folks that aren't here, but just, uh, again, BRNA, uh, energy engineer and mechanical, uh, electric and, and plumbing consultant. And then Haley and Aldrich, we have as a geotech engineer. So, got a, a, a good group of people involved with this and just felt it appropriately let you know who's here. So, uh, you go to the next one. So, I'm not going to spend time on this, but this is just really what we're looking to, uh, cover with you tonight in terms of introducing the project and some things relative to the history of the site and, uh, whatnot, which we'll get into, so. So, thought this might be helpful just in terms of what we have. So, we have, obviously, have filed for, um, various special permits that are all allowed, uh, uses by special permit under the PDD zoning. And, um, we are looking to modify the approvals that were previously granted by the board, uh, back in two thousand fourteen as part of a, a phase three development. If, and we, we referenced there, you know, to replace the current phase three decision for office and retail. As, as the board may recall, back in two thousand fourteen, there was approval granted, and the permits are actually still in effect. They, they've been extended through the years for a new office building, which at the time was dubbed the, uh, the five-over-five office building that was going to be near, uh, Building seven hundred. Uh, the, what I still refer to as the Baybank Tower at times, but this building was going to be, uh, next to that. But a five, five stories of office over five stories of garage. So, I think that, uh, I think Ernie, Joe, Bill, and Barbara, I think you were all on the board then, so hopefully you have some recollection of that. And then there was also going to be a retail building that was going to be over, kind of behind Prest, between Prest and the Burlington Mall. It was a new retail building that was approved as well. So, those two have, obviously, have not been built, and what we're proposing currently would be in lieu thereof. Um, so, we've had a lot of interaction with different departments and boards and, and groups in Burlington over the past several months. And that just is meant to itemize some of the things that we've done in terms of having, uh, DCM meetings. We've consulted with the Board of Health, had a subcommittee meeting with them. We were actually supposed to meet with them on Tuesday night, uh, as a board, but they ended up canceling the meeting due to the impending storm. Um, and then, obviously, we're, we're here with you now, and we also have, uh, Conservation Commission coming up next week. So, and, again, just the, the, the planning board approvals are, are what we're here for. We would need to modify our Conservation Commission Order of Conditions as well, and, and some other approvals that we've, we've listed. Uh, so, if you could go on there. So, and again, I'm going to turn it over to Katie in a moment just to walk through the project. But I thought this might be helpful just to give you, um, kind of a little bit of a history here of where, uh, the site has been and how it was approved. But as many of you may recall, that we were on, on the planning board at the time, or maybe involved with town meeting or whatnot. The planned development district was adopted by town meeting in two thousand nine for this site. Property was then owned by Equity Office, some of you may recall. But basically, the, uh, intention was to allow for a mixed-use campus at, uh, formerly known as the New England Executive Park, to allow for different uses that were not allowed at that time. Structured parking, trying to promote more open space and green space, and, uh, really trying to make for a, a, a campus that could, uh, have uses that complement one another and, uh, provide a lot of interaction. So, um, in two thousand thirteen, National Development acquired the property, and at that time embarked upon a phased master plan build-out of the site, which many components have taken place. I think that through two thousand and fifteen and twenty-one, certainly, the board understands what, what has happened out there in terms of a lot of the mitigation components that have been built for the, the full build concept. Uh, and then also building expansions for Building seven hundred, which is the, the tower building. Uh, new restaurant and retail amenities that have been provided, which I'm sure some of you frequent at times, between Press Cafe, Row Thirty-four, uh, Black and Blue, uh, Main and Manny, and, and, and others that are there, along with the, the two restaurants out at the, the front, obviously Tuscan and, and Tavern. A new Marriott Residence Inn that's been provided as well, along with a, uh, parking garage that was built at Build, uh, for, uh, twenty-four hundred, uh, building. So, um, and what we're here to seek your approval for now is basically to, um, modify the phase threes such that instead of going forward with the office and the retail, they're looking to provide life science and lab, uh, which they feel is going to really complement the, the camp as well. So, with that, maybe I could turn it over to Katie, um, and talk a little bit about what their vision here and reintroduce you to some of the features here of the park, so.
Hi, everybody. Katie Snyder, National Development. Nice to see you all. I'm, um, really thrilled to be here. Um, we've been thinking about this project, this latest version of this project for the better part of a year. Um, so it's actually, like, really exciting to be before you finally, because it's felt like a long time. Um, so we're really excited about this project. We think life science is a great addition to the district. Um, we have been really thoughtful about the master plan. I'm going to save all of that to David and to Chris because they're wonderful, explaining their, their, their vision and their thought. And, of course, I can't, I can't go on without saying how, um, you know, I was reflecting on just my involvement with this project starting back in two thousand fifteen, so it was somewhere in the middle of that page previously. Um, but I think we have consultants that have been working on the district, um, that go back maybe twenty years. Um, I think I saw a well report from Haley and Aldrich that was done in two thousand and three. Um, so, but for maybe BR plus A, I think everyone, um, at the table, and that's when part of this team has been involved with the project for a long time. Um, but I'm, I'm also only one person of many at National Development. I know I've seen many faces over the years, Andrew Gallinaro, um, and many others. Uh, we have a really, um, I think there's a lot of people that take a lot of pride of ownership of the district. Uh, we have a really robust property management team. Um, I felt like, I saw them last week at our annual meeting, and they were like, wish we could be there with you. So, I think there's a lot of pride, um, in the district of Burlington and, and our office, and I just felt like I needed to say that tonight. So, um, before we get into life science and this future phase, it, I, I felt like we had to show the first picture, one of the first pictures we have of the district, um, since our ownership. We, we used to call the, um, sort of the entrance here, um, the, the green monster on the, on the, on the right used to kind of pull into this campus. It was a pretty predominantly solely for office. I think it was a premier office park in its day. Um, and when we purchased the property, you know, quickly, we're looking to re-envision it and really follow sort of the menu that was laid before us with the PDD provision. Um, and so I think, I think we've achieved that. I know Mark just walked through kind of what we did in phase one, what we call phase one and phase two, which was really one combined phase. Um, but we, we completed, completed major upgrades to what is now District Ave. We put the road on a road diet. We brought in streetscape. We brought, um, amenities. We brought amenities to that streetscape. Um, we looked at our existing kit of office spaces. We improved lobbies. We upgraded elevators. We kind, almost touched every single building, um, throughout the campus. And then, you know, not to mention, obviously, you know, taking down the west elevation of seven hundred, putting in that expansion that expanded the, the lower floors of 700, putting in that expansion that expanded the lower floors to take them from an 8,000 square foot floor plate to like a 22,000 square foot floor plate and added a roof check. So touched every kind of corner of the campus. You can keep scrolling, sorry. I thought we were going to have, just showing you some of the branding that came to fruition as we re-envisioned those phases. You can keep going, Brian. Obviously, we know these areas well, so we intended to kind of show how, where we were before and where we are today. The rain garden here is not quite filled in. Vinebrook overlook, which we'll get into more on that. 700. So why life science? We know there's been a lot in the news, especially in the last couple of weeks, about life science and maybe some economic headwinds. We continue to think that life science is good for Burlington and good for the District Burlington. We have a really long-term look at the viability of the district. We think it's, we're continuing to invest in it as a firm ourselves. We're looking in Watertown right now, with some other developers on projects in Watertown and Boston. And we see that the outlook is good and positive for life science going forward. And we also know that the life science tenants like to cluster. I think with Broad coming to Burlington and others and all the good work that I believe the planning staff and planning board did to sort of look at the zoning differently and incorporate life science into the zoning was really important. And we're hoping to kind of continue in that effect. And I think with the density we have in this program that you'll see, it's really, really important to think about the cluster effect. More gets more, I guess, is the best way to say it. Tenants like to be near each other. They draw from the talent that comes with each other, and they continue to kind of thrive in that way. And as it relates to the district, we really want kind of like a balanced ecosystem. We have a lot of office space right now, and we'll get into it. But part of the program is to take down some office. In the same way that we took down some obsolete space with Building Three, putting in a hotel, taking down some of the obsolete space at 700 and replacing it, same rules apply. We're looking at the entire campus and thinking about the office that we have. We know there'll be a shift in the office user market. We know that office is evolving. And we're anticipating for that, and we're trying to be smart about what we do with the development. So we're keeping all of those things in mind as we think about what the district is, the types of uses that we'll have, kind of what the future wants to be. So with that, we'll get to the plan.
Chris and David, why don't we swap? That way you can have a better view there.
Good evening, everybody. I'm David Manfredi from Elkes Manfredi Architects. And as Katie said, we've been working here for a number of years, and I think there is value in that continuity. We had a vision seven or eight years ago, or maybe longer, about making more green space, about making the entire area more pedestrian, about connecting to Vinebrook and creating amenities that would attract tenants, but also people, residents, and creating more of a sense of mixed use, so it didn't all go dark at 5:00 on Friday night. This is the next step, as Katie said. It is about economic vitality, but it's also about the value of mixed use. It brings more people, different people. It brings more customers for the retail and for the restaurants. It puts more people on those sidewalks, and it makes for a more active place. One of the most significant things I hope you take away from what we're going to show you is that we are replacing surface parking lots with parks. We're making the entire district more green and better connected to the surrounding network of open spaces. And we want to contribute to making, again, another generation of placemaking. What we mean by that is placemaking is enhanced by making things feel closer together on the ground. What I mean by that is if you're all the way out on the southern end and you're going to the Tuscan Grill, please don't get in your car. Walk. Walk because it's a good walk. It's a walk where there are uses that line both sides of District Avenue that engage pedestrians in a place you want to walk. Maybe not the last couple of days, but most of the time, and that's what we're trying to do. And Chris is going to talk a lot about our environmental stewardship. I'll talk about how it relates to buildings. You'll see that there's two new parking garages proposed. Both of those parking garages will be covered with photovoltaics and make a significant contribution to energy use on the site. Next, Brian.
So this was the old plan. This was the idea of phased implementation. And we had a first generation of development, and you can see the blue buildings along District Drive were all about making better edges, infilling, putting more activity into the center. And those got built. The hotel, the retail, another parking garage, and then the addition we did on Building 700. If you go to the next, Brian. So the next generation was going to be, as Mark described, basically three projects. The retail and the garage, which would be on the west side on the property line, office and garage on the south side at 128, and then a new garage for 700. In retrospect, I'll characterize all of those as being at the perimeter. And where we're going now is to build into the center. We want to make things more proximate. So Brian, go to the next. So the dashed red lines show where we were going to go, and where we're proposing to go is we'll see Building A, Building B, and Building C, and Garage A and Garage B. They are closer to Main Street. They are closer to the center of action. And the goal is bring things closer together, bring people closer together, create the kind of interaction, collaboration, that is all about innovation in these kinds of environments. And you'll also see, it's less gray in this red drawing, there's more green. There's more green spaces of different types. And we've dismantled the five-over-five, put buildings on the ground, and we think that makes more walkable places as well. If you go to the next, Brian. So I'll take it piece by piece and start with Phase One, and that's the two blue buildings that you see all the way up against 128. And it's a new life science R and D building, calling it Building A. It is six stories tall. It's 190,000 square feet. You'll remember previously on that site, we proposed the five-over-five, which obviously is 10 stories tall. There's a new separate parking structure that's only four stories. It's 430 spaces. And on that rooftop, the photovoltaics that will generate 584 kilowatt hours to contribute to energy use on the site, basically covering the entire top floor of the parking garage. Previously, there was an 180,000 square foot office, 25,000 square feet of retail, and 800 parking spaces. Next, Brian, is Phase Two. So Phase Two now is on the east side. And you'll see this is the first of two additional life science R and D buildings. This one is six stories tall. It's 228,000 square feet. A new parking structure immediately east of that, which will also be four stories, approximately 780 spaces. And again, another solar array, another 1,000 kilowatt hours potential, but should be achievable. And the demolition of the existing Building 1700, which sits on the site today where we're proposing that life science building. So there's a minus there of 75,000. And then Phase Three is the third of these life science buildings. It's six stories. It's 228,000 square feet. It's not quite a twin. It's a close cousin of the Phase Two building. We'll demolish Building 1200. It's an add of 20,000 square feet. And we have a strategy about parking because I think we all know that parking is changing, parking habits are changing. And so we're creating what we're calling land bank parking, so that on Garage B, we'll have the capacity, the structural capacity in the building to add another 450 spaces, again, more photovoltaics. We also will have the capacity, because it was built in in the last phase of construction, on Garage 2400, to add another 200 spaces if and when they are needed. And the structural capacity is in both of those buildings now, so that the addition will be relatively straightforward and relatively quick in terms of construction schedule. Brian, next. So you all know that design principles, they all come out of your framework, and they are important to us. They've shaped the work we've done here. And you'll see it in complete streets. You talked about it before we even got started. And you'll hear more about complete streets and the whole discussion on landscape. But I'm going to suggest that complete streets, the most important part of public realm, but the ground floor of buildings are part of public realm as well. And so you're going to see streetscape and ground floors of buildings and how they connect with each other. And you're going to see an investment in making good places to walk. What we're trying to do by building into the center is bring those pieces together, make people pedestrians as opposed to drivers for every errand they need to do or every time they want to go to lunch. And then in the architecture, we think a sense of refinement, of greater articulation in those building facades, and also connections. And not all connections have to be vehicular. You'll see some paseos, some pedestrian connections, that not only connect building to building at the district, but also connect the district to the Burlington Mall. Next, Brian. So with this, you can see the overall plan, all of the pieces of this next generation in place. So Building A, immediately adjacent to Building 700 out on 128, the adjacent Garage A, and then Buildings B and C. And Buildings B and C, you can see they are kind of parallel to District Drive. They were using buildings to frame space and make, we think, an important park between those two buildings. A different kind of greenscape, green space than exists today. Today, there's Vinebrook. Today, there is the park in front of 700. This is, again, a contained park space that's publicly accessible to all. And then Building B, together, the pair, and Parking Garage B.
There it goes. Oh, that's really hard to see. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Jones with IVI Group. I recognize some of you from the past two phases. It's so nice to be back with you. And Katie said, "We've been at this for a long time." What she didn't know is that, if you all remember, the elongated roundabouts that used to be here before, before you were owners, we actually redesigned that gathering space with the fountain and the seating that was in the middle of that roundabout. And so we've been at it a long time, two owners. But it's interesting because what David talks about...
The water feature.
Yeah, the water feature and the sculpture. And yeah, remember that?
There's birches in there.
And the birch trees. Yeah, that's right. And David really touched on the concept of walkability and the taking spaces like that, that you had to cross roads to get to, sort of an island gathering space. And by putting the roads on these diets, we were able to put the green space and the gathering space adjacent buildings and make it more meaningful. And a significant part in the entirety of District Avenue became a highly walkable environment. And this diagram is really intended to show you what we achieved in Phase One, Two, but what we're striving for in Phase Three. And it's significant. As you know, the Vinebrook Trail, we only were able to do a small portion of that, and now we can do twice that amount to make that full connection. So we're super excited about that Phase Three part. And you can see that in the diagram, as well as making these distances that people travel shorter or more interesting, because the distances always seem longer if there's nothing between point A and point B. And that will promote the walkability. This also points out that that walkability starts to put people in the mindset that you have an opportunity to be a somewhat transit-oriented design solution, because people will say, "Oh, I could take the bus or the public transportation. I could walk onto the campus," or "I can take my bike." And all those things are being considered as part of this first diagram you see here. Next slide. There's a lag. This diagram sort of demonstrates that walkability, the five-minute circle from this new central green space. We've also started to think about how we could create measured walks, a third-mile walk, a half-mile walk, and a one-mile loop. And there could be a variety of those that are developed through a wayfinding system. So we're kind of excited how that can complete itself and allow for a full walking loop through the campus, all in support of a wellness approach to the design. Landscape performance. We're not just creating open spaces. We think of landscape as something that's at work. It's making the environment better. It's thinking about how to manage water, how to improve habitat, thinking about the materials and the other elements that enrich the environment, promote sustainability, promote nature, and make people have fun at the same time. So it has to be a happy place at the same time. And a sea of parking is not as happy as a lot of green space. This also indicates the existing tree canopy and the proposed tree canopy, a significant increase in the amount of shade and tree canopy that is afforded in this solution. Next. I mentioned performance and sustainability, this holistic approach to the landscape, thinking about the use of native plantings, promoting wildlife habitat through the way that we organize the site, thinking about weaving in pollinator plants, again, with the mindset of promoting nature and stewardship to the land. David mentioned solar energy harvesting and stormwater management as well. Next. This is trying to highlight the amount of significant public open space that's created with the new sites within the district. You can see it's a significant amount of new open space. We have, as part of Phase One and Two, we were able to achieve quite a bit by creating a large green space near Building 800 by shifting that island over, a little sort of, I've always called it the village center where the retail occurs, and the Vinebrook itself. And the new primary open spaces that I'll take you through in detail are the Vinebrook Extension, the Vinebrook Park is what we're calling it, and the Central Green. First and foremost, as you know, the upper image is showing you the existing condition with the small segment of trail and the one overlook we have near the waterfall. It ended at Building 1600, and then you had to make your way back into the campus. With the removal of all of the head-in parking along that run, we're gaining that additional 20 feet and giving it back to the edge of the brook and allowing us to extend the trail all the way down to Building 800 and incorporating two new overlooks that are sort of equally spaced, so they become a place of rest or relaxation as you make the walk around the campus. At the southern end where Building 800 is, you'll see on this next slide that we're shifting the, we're taking, that large green space that you see on the east side of Building 800 is a loading dock now. And to make this connection work, we've shifted the loading dock, created this larger green space, and it allows us to make that pedestrian connection back to the existing paths that are to the west on Building 800. So we're really excited about being able to make that slight adjustment to really improve the overall experience around the edge and complete the loop, because without that, we couldn't really complete the loop entirety. Next slide. At the central lawn, we designed a solution for this really large lawn that would be, what we call a performance lawn. And we've incorporated an elevated stage and pavilion at the southern end. One of the things that you all probably know is National is so good at programming their open space and their properties. This was a real opportunity to create a location where they can program this, you know, throughout the season. You can have movie nights. You can have cycling performances and concerts and other types of things that really bring the community together. And it also incorporates strong north-south connections that will hopefully tie to future connections to Building 800 and 2400, shortening that walk that we talked about. We've also created gathering spaces that support both Building B and Building C, and just a mix of uses within there for seating and comfort and shade and sun. And it really becomes a real transformation of an existing parking field. And you'll see that on the next slide, the existing condition where you're looking in at the parking field, and you see Building 1700 in the distance to the left, and the after shot of that, where you see this new green space with new trees. We are striving hard to keep as many existing trees around these buildings as possible. There's one just to the left, one of the major tree staying, as well as on District Avenue, keeping the existing linden trees there as well. A significant transformation to a parking field into a really wonderful open space. Next slide. The Vinebrook Park. We had a lot of conversations about when Building 1700 came down, how would we locate the Building B seat garage? And could we push it as far to the south as possible to open up this space to become a significant park space? We do have some surface parking lot, but that's intended to support accessible parking spaces with reasonable proximity to all of the buildings. We've designed this with additional rain gardens that support the existing rain garden that's just to the left of the 1600 entry. And the right side where you see that tree massing is intended to be a bit of a gesture to the experience along the brook. So you've got the wooded meandering experience at the brook, and this vegetation and this dry stream that becomes a rain garden is sort of the first markings of your movement to the brook itself, with a little bit of an open lawn to the right for people to sit and relax on that. Next slide. This is a before shot. You're seeing Building 1600 on your right, looking west, and an after shot showing these new crossings that allow you to sort of sit within the experience of the rain garden that would sort of move underneath this crossing. You're seeing the opportunity for gathering in these spaces and a really highly enriched in green space, all supporting the overall concepts we were talking about for holistic landscape. We call this the South Quad. This is really the new space that's created between Building 700 and the Building A and the Building A garage. It's more of an urban, I don't want to say urban, because I know that's not really the right word, but it's a paved gathering space with an intention to make this highly pedestrian, promoting pedestrian movement because of the dialogue and the relationship between 700 and 800 and the garage will be fairly significant. So we've tabled that crossing. We've tabled and flushed the entrance into the garage itself, changing those materials to really promote a pedestrian-first mindset. We're incorporating raised and acrid plantings and fixed seating. The images are sort of inspirational of what that might look like. And then we have a, next slide. Oh, and the paseo. The paseo, I should have touched on. In Phase One and Phase Two, there was a lot of conversations about making those mall connections, so that there was a strong interconnectivity between the mall and the ability to traverse by foot. And this is sort of the southern tip solution to achieve that same goal. The buildings were pulled apart to a comfortable distance that would allow this to be a spill-out space for Building A tenants, as well as a shady space, because sometimes in the summer we don't want to go sit out in the sun. We can just spill out and sit in a little space and enjoy the shade, but the breeze. And it's also designed with, if you can see in the southern part of the garage, is the bike parking, and there will be an entry-exit point, so that the commuters can really help activate this space on a daily basis. And I think we have a distant before shot across the 800 green and a proposed shot. And you can see the daylighting between the two buildings that sort of draws you into that space. And with that, I will hand it back to David.
Thanks, Chris. So we've just zoomed in now on that previous rendering that you just saw, and you're looking on the right-hand side down that paseo towards the Burlington Mall, and then on your left, the sixth-story new building that we think responds to your very specific design guidelines about facade articulation, about detail, in a very, what will be a very sophisticated building in all of its infrastructure, but also in its architecture. You can see there's a sense of ground plane that's open and more active. The second and third floors have bigger openings. The openings get smaller as you go up, in a way, creating a subtle sense of a building base in the middle and the top three stories. You can see all of what Chris was talking about. There's a sense of arrival here. You are now at the south end of District Avenue. You can see the pavement. You can see that sense of arrival. And then, of course, you move... And then, of course, you move to the parking structure here or the parking structure immediately to the east. Go to the next one. This is another view of District Avenue. Now I'm all the way back and I'm looking directly south, that's 700 right in front of me, but the idea of complete streets and what makes up complete streets, of course, is not just the sidewalk, not just that planting zone, but also wherever possible the addition of those parallel parking spaces that makes the public realm more comfortable. And you can see Building B, which is the second six-story building, again, office, life science, R&amp;D space, different architecture. We want this to feel like a real place and not like a project where there's diversity among the buildings. If you go to the next one, Brian. Moved a little bit further down District Avenue, looking across now, and both buildings are in place, both Building B and Building C. You just get a peek into that park space on the left that Chris was talking about. You get a sense of these base, the base of these buildings really coming to the ground, being very transparent at the base. We want to see what's happening inside. We don't want these to be closed boxes. We want them to engage pedestrians. This has a different material palette. We're thinking this building is clad in what's called now ultra-high-performance concrete panels, very different than historic precast panels which were kind of heavy, difficult to get variation in texture and color, and this is a whole new generation, a whole new technology is how to build these panels. Go to the next one, Brian. And now I'm looking, this is a similar view to what Chris showed you. I'm looking between the two buildings. And while I said the buildings weren't, they're not twins, they're cousins. They're very similar in their height, obviously, in their use, but you can see the different manipulation of that cladding material. So they are a little bit different and yet they're both used to frame that park, create a sense of containment, always publicly accessible, always inviting, and connected to all of those other spaces that Chris described. Next. Sustainability. And we've learned a lot over the last 15, 20 years about how to make these buildings highly sustainable. They do use a lot of energy, but they recover a lot of energy. All of these buildings now come with heat recovery so that you're not throwing that all out into the atmosphere. And they can be sustainability, they can be sustainable buildings. We expect this to be a silver lead building. We aspire to more and do as much as we can to make it as highly efficient as possible. That goes with the building envelope, it goes with all of the systems in the building, and then ultimately goes to the operations of the building. Next, Brian. So with that, I will hand it off to Eric Girard.
Eric Girard, I'm a civil engineer with VHB, working on the project. Rich Hallworth, who I think many of you know as well, has been very involved with the project as well as the past two stories. So we've been working closely together, advancing into this next phase. So touching on the stormwater management approach and building on what was done previously, understanding that there's been new regulations set in place by the town. So we have a more robust stormwater management program for this new project. So we're really striving with, you know, low-impact development strategy, comprehensive soil, sediment erosion control, and water quality enhancements to complement all phases of the stormwater management. As we already mentioned, increased open space at the district. We're upwards of 42%, which is over the 40% required under the PDD. Restoring the natural water cycle. We are providing a significant more infiltration and recharge into the aquifer, enhancing the Vine Brook corridor, as Chris mentioned, with the new walkway, pulling that pavement back, the reduction of overall impervious area at the property, and then incorporating those native plant species back in into that roof front area. Moving on into the kind of the soil erosion and sediment controls during construction, typical construction measures to be implemented with your perimeter erosion controls, stabilized construction exits during construction, incorporating an overall source control plan at the district with pavement sweeping, the regular maintenance, great property management team to keep all the systems in check and up to date and incorporating that overall long-term operations and maintenance plan which is required under all the regulations. For the water quality enhancements, we are exceeding the stormwater management standards requirements with the removal efficiencies for the TSS removal. We're upwards of 81% on the TSS, that's total suspended solids, and then as well as phosphorus removal, which is new in the regulations with the Town of Burlington, as well as the EPA MS4 permitting. So we are achieving the 67% removal, 50% required, and that's primarily achieved with the incorporation of the infiltrating groundwater measures for the stormwater, rain gardens, subsurface infiltration basins throughout the development. Overall, we are reducing impervious area by about an additional 10,000 square feet and we are promoting that additional groundwater recharge by new stormwater infiltration practices with about 21,000 cubic feet of additional subsurface infiltration and surface infiltration. So that's kind of the high-level stormwater management approach and the design standards we are achieving.
Last one, traffic.
I think we just felt like not talking about it felt like there was something to not, to be back. So we wanted to take the time. We can always, I mean, we envision certainly coming back, so.
Yes.
Obviously. So we can take a deeper dive on anything, not just Q and A, but it's going to do a brief overview for us.
Last but not least, sir.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Vinod Kalikiri. I'm a transportation planner with VHB. I've seen a lot of members on the board during the last iteration, a lot of new members as well, but as Katie mentioned, VHB has been involved in the development of various projects on this site, especially as well as up and down Burlington Mall Road as well as Middle Sixth Street Pike over the years. So very deeply involved with the transportation infrastructure impact analysis and the mitigation development that has happened here over the years. What you have on the screen is essentially a repeat of the traffic study, the very extensive traffic study that we did back in 2014, 2015 for the original project. We looked at all three phases back then. The mitigation was developed for that overall plan, and even though only two phases were implemented, the mitigation was constructed for the full build-out. One of those elements that came out of that as an offshoot of that process, actually Mass DOT took that upon themselves after the fact, was the large adaptive traffic signal system that was implemented. It covers 28 to 29 signalized intersections in the town. That's the first adaptive signal system in the state of this size, and that was actually an offshoot of the initial permitting for this project. And my understanding is it's working really well. What we did is picked up the traffic study from where we left off at the last time and we updated it with all new traffic counts and traffic analysis to reflect the impact analysis associated with this project. And this project, again, similar to the last one, will undergo MEPA and Mass DOT review as well at some point in the future. Next slide.
Just curious, when was that, when was the update done on that traffic study?
The traffic study is dated actually February 1st of this year, but the data was collected late last year, October, November timeframe. So it's all brand-new information since the old data was quite, several years old. We went out and collected all the new data. And then there are DOT procedures on how to handle COVID-related impacts on the data, and all of that has been built into the analysis and will be reviewed by DOT.
Thank you.
So just a few highlights, I'm not going to read.
Just a quick question in relation to that. Curious, more than anything, you said you had collected the data how many years ago and then you just collect it again?
Yeah, the original data goes back to 2013, 2014 for the original permitting of the project, and then again we collected it late last year.
And what did you find the difference was?
The numbers were lower. There's been definite bounce back since COVID. I mean, during COVID, obviously, everything went down substantially, but there's been continuous bounce back of the traffic. But it is still a little bit lower across the board, so there are procedures within the DOT process to take those numbers and adjust them for the COVID impact. So there is a new baseline condition that's part of this traffic study that accounts for that dip in traffic volumes associated with COVID.
Scales it up.
It scales it back up. That's right.
It scales it, so it's like a hypothetical kind of situation?
Yeah, I mean, any project that you would see for the next several years would be based on numbers like that. If the numbers are not going to bounce back anytime soon, that's the state's belief as well. Mass DOT thinks it's going to be several years before numbers come back. So they have implemented procedures to be able to scale the numbers back up so we're not underestimating the impacts.
Is that data was taken about a year ago, you said?
No, November, it's October, November of 2022. Yeah, just five, six months ago. So just to touch upon a few of the highlights, life sciences projects in general because of the nature and how they operate and how the space is used generates less amount of traffic than office uses. I see actually some bar charts on the right side that compares office traffic versus lab life sciences for comparable square footage. A lot of that is because the traffic is spread over a longer portion of the day. People work different shifts. And the operations of life sciences employees are different from that of typical office users. The mitigation, as I mentioned, has already been implemented for the full build-out of the previously approved project, even though only two phases of the project have been constructed. So we are able to benefit, I guess, in a sense of, you know, because all of that mitigation's in place. And when you look at each of the, and then we are actually taking down about 150,000 square feet of existing office use on the campus and not building Phase Three of the previously approved project. So there's a lot of capacity that we are actually creating by not building some of the previously approved projects and then tearing down 150,000 square feet of office. And that added capacity would offset the needs of the new life sciences department that we have. And that, the three buildings are going to come in in phases. They're not all going to be online on day one. So when you look at the first building, when it comes in, actually the overall campus is actually going to be generating less traffic than the previous full build-out that we had presented to the board and to the town and mitigated for. So as and when each of the new buildings comes online, there'll be obviously some additional increase in traffic associated with them, but overall, what we've found with the added capacity and the infrastructure that's been built, there's enough capacity in the system to support the full build-out of this new Phase Three. As you heard from Chris and others earlier, there's a very strong connectivity plan that's being developed for bicycles, pedestrians, transit connections, very convenient transit connections available on Mall Road that was all implemented as part of the previous project that will all be available to this project. There are strong transportation demand management measures, including membership to the Business Council, TMA. There are a lot of measures, non-infrastructure-based improvements that are part of the plan that would help reduce the number of vehicular trips that would be generated by this development. But overall, you'll see in the study that there's adequate capacity to support this project, and obviously this will all be reviewed by MEPA and Mass DOT as well concurrent with this process we're going through with the town. So that's a quick snapshot of the transportation analysis and obviously we can get into more detail as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is the last slide. I know it was like, Katie, never end of the topic. Why? But I think we, you know, there's a lot of information we want to dig in and go through Q and A here, but we just kind of put the thesis back at the end to conclude our presentation, which is we want to see the district thrive into the future. We want to bring people back to the district. You know, we know office is going to evolve and change, but we think bringing in mix of uses is really important. I just wanted to highlight the new percentage. We hear a lot of square footage counts and parking counts. Sometimes it doesn't mean a whole lot to me, but we look at it in specific terms. You know, if this is approved, you know, we'll be looking at about 10% of the campus being hospitality and amenity, 50% office and 40% light sites. And that feels like a healthy mix for this project going forward. We talked a lot about, you know, taking away parking and putting in parks. Basically flipped the script. We have about 70% of the surface of all the parking, 70% of it is surface park today. And with this project, once it's fully built, we flip it. It goes to about 34% of the parking stock being on the surface. We're densifying the property, obviously, but we're also densifying the parking and making way for parks. All of the things that Chris and David talked about, place making, connectivity. We talked a lot about bringing it to the center with the new program. I think that's a huge part of this, but it's also about connecting to adjacencies. We know that the town is looking at a rezoning effort on Burlington Mall Road and how important it is to connect through these properties. Like everything we've presented, it just so happened that I think the first meeting with the advisory group for the Burlington Mall Road rezoning effort was February 1st, the day we filed. So it was just interesting timing. But we think everything we've proven here will include or hurt any of that effort, good or bad, whatever way it goes. And then, of course, always happy to end on environmental stewardship. I think we wanted to lead with the idea of the silver buildings with a lot of open space. I think I missed a stat, we're five times, this program, this revised Phase Three has five times the amount of open space that the former Phase Three program had included. So we want to enhance that environment. We want to bring good type buildings, sustainable buildings to the campus, and we wanted to also just incorporate solar. I think it's the way that we need to go, we're putting a solar canopy on a project in Motter Town. I think it's the right thing to do and we wanted to lead that as part of our program.
Great. Thank you. It's a lot to digest. I guess probably in the interest of everyone's time, I think it'd make the best to kind of go around to the board, just throw out a couple ideas. Not necessarily looking for responses right now. If you have a response, great. If not, you know, maybe take some notes and then we can come back and address things as they arise. I'll start with the central lawn. I'd be interested in knowing, you know, kind of what your programming looks like, what capacity looks like, who is able to utilize that space? Is it public space? Is it just for district? Is it rentable for anyone? I love the idea of the walkability. You know, as you know, some folks love the sculpture park and there is desire to add sculptures and artwork throughout the community and make that more vibrant. Things like security and lighting, what does that look like? You know, where people will probably be utilizing this space for exercise, you know, is there going to be, you know, kind of an animal and pet cleanup type things? Because I imagine people will be walking their dogs in this area. Another thought was food vendors and food trucks. You know, are you going to be having cafeterias in each of these buildings or what does that look like? You know, I want to be cognizant of diminishing the tax income and promoting local vendors. I think that that's important. What else? I looked at a project, and granted, it was in California where it's a lot nicer, but there was edible plants, which I thought was kind of a cool concept. I mean, we do live in New England, maybe some apple trees here and there. That might be something that's, you know, interesting. I will let the rest of my board jump in because I'm sure they have some of the same ideas. Barbara?
Okay, first of all, I agree with everything Brenda said. Thanks for the plug on sculptures. We love sculptures and we think, I think it would be fabulous if with this beautiful walk that you're creating, if there could be some artwork along the side so that people have something to look at. I mean, obviously, they're going to look at the beautiful nature, but maybe on the other side of the walk, they could also look at artwork. So I love that idea. I'm glad that you're thinking about connections to other campuses on either side of you. I'd like side of you. I'd like to explore the possibility of connecting on the other side to Leahy. I don't know if it's possible. I realize there's a grade issue, but I'd like to talk about that. I'd also like to explore the possibility of another connection to the mall. I understand where you have that, and that's great. But I also think that it would be helpful to have a second connection further, closer to Press Cafe, say, because I think there's a lot of activity that goes back and forth right in that area. And I think it would be good to formalize that connection if possible. Kudos for lead buildings, silver leads. I think we can do better. So I'd like you to talk about that a little bit. And then, because these are lab spaces that you're looking to build, I'd like to know what your plan will be for toxic materials and how that will be handled. If each building will have its own handling for toxic materials, or if you're going to somehow do that all together. I want to make sure that it's internal to your buildings, not external. So if you, when we get back together, perhaps you could address that. In general, this looks really, it's a lot to absorb, but it looks very impressive. I hated the five over five, so I'm glad it's gone. But it's a lot, so I need more time to absorb. Thank you.
Jess?
I think, I mean, you guys covered a lot, which is great. My main question was more on, I know you were planning the solar on the new garage. Is there solar additions anywhere else within the park? Or is the main focus kind of the new garage?
We've been focused on the two new garages.
Okay.
And then the Lamb Bank. I think you can see it in a couple of the slides in terms of the graphics, but it would also be included on twenty-four hundred. I think we built those two additional levels.
It does, but from a footprint perspective, it's the most logical place to do it because that tends to be the most expansive rooftop, if you would, to provide it. So we think that does make the most sense.
We can always study the existing garages. The challenge there is there will learn and construction capacity makes it a little bit challenging.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was just my main thing was if there were additional opportunities for more solar. And then my last question is, for the office space that you're planning to demo, how much of that is currently used? Basically, trying to understand, because if it's not currently being used, then I feel like the demo of that space wouldn't have as much of a positive effect on some of the traffic or amount of people. But if it is being used, obviously, then that kind of makes more sense for the given the take.
We're looking at that today.
Okay.
And we're looking into the future and how we can potentially relocate some of the tenants with existing space. And we know that there's going to be sort of tightening of the market. So, but they both are used today.
Okay, great. And then my only comment is that I do love all the gathering spaces because I, obviously, for the future of more of the office space, people are looking for opportunities. When, because when people come in, they're not going to come in every day. They're, when they come in, they want to be able to hang out with their coworkers, do events, and things like that. So I do think the ability for people to gather, not just during the day, but also after hours, is going to be an important aspect of making sure we continue to draw people into that area.
I could just comment. So I think many of you know, but we're actually a tenant within the park. So we're in building seven hundred on the eleventh floor. So I'm saying this because you're a landlord, but they do a wonderful job of maintaining the park and programming it during the summer months. They actually have, you know, some picnic events and things that they're, if you haven't seen the roof deck that's on building seven hundred, you should see it at some point. It's fabulous. There's a lot of activities that happen out there. In fact, you even have bees out there, too, where you're.
Oh, that's right.
Every now and then I see a beekeeper go out there to get honey and whatnot. But no, they do a wonderful job of programming and keeping it a robust environment, a place that us as a tenant or, you know, I think future tenants that they're trying to attract and bring potentially, you know, out of Boston or Cambridge would find attractive.
We want people to come to Burlington and they grow the district.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hoping.
You're up.
Thank you, man. Chair, my first question is the black dotted line on page seventeen, is that the expansion of the garage B, phase three?
The dotted line on.
Black dotted line on page seventeen.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is the expansion of building B, which accounts for about four hundred to four hundred and fifty spaces.
Okay. Yep. On, on building C, do you plan on any retail on the first floor since it's facing the District Avenue?
Not at this time.
That would be nice. Good idea, Bill.
And because when I saw, you know, what you're showing here is very, very Cambridge-y, and typically, they have first floor retail, and then they would have the science above that. Then again, most, we try to stay away from connecting us up with the city of Cambridge, but this is what we're just looking at here, you know, because you don't have any say in that. But on page thirty-seven, you've mentioned these things called, I don't know if I can pronounce it, canary lights?
Catnary.
Catnary lights? Is that the upper right corner with the halos of that same page? Or what is a catnary light?
It's the string lights that are overhead.
Like the Christmas light?
Catnary is just the shape of the.
Kind, yeah.
Which they have kind of.
So in the bottom left picture, not the top right picture?
So it's bottom left, you're talking about strings across that? Okay. So more of a kind of a Christmas feel to it. But there's, but there's not going to be any retail on the bottom of building A. It's just more of an effective walkthrough, right?
Walk through with, you know, I think the idea.
Restaurants there, there won't be a, you know, like you see, when you typically see those type of lights, you have, you know, restaurants and tables during kind of that strict pedestrian way. There's no traffic, right?
That's right.
Okay. Again, there, I'm just trying to see what that is in the big pictures, you know, because you might have a nice, you know, in the nice weather here, which we've had a lot of recently, that when you go to places like that, you would have kind of a, you know, an outdoor eating area with some restaurants there as well. But it seems like that's a little further away from your retail connection. So the Baybank Building, which is a Charles River development now, that's, how many stories is that, you know, offhand?
So eleven stories.
Eleven stories. I had twelve. Okay. It's eleven versus the two six that we're putting up, right? At least the two six. And the other one, the other buildings are.
All three are six.
All, okay, all six. The only thing, you know, when you made, talked about maintenance of the park, we had done a walk around. It was fairly heavy into COVID. There were people actually sitting in parking lots out there just to have their own little private get together. And we went around and in the back of Garage seven hundred, at the time at least, it looked like a dumping area, to be quite honest with you. It was, I don't know, I haven't been there recently, but, you know, it seemed like that's the place where you, everything kind of, kind of ended up in that whole back area, because you stopped the path, you know, as you're coming back in. But that, that area, even around the back, is very nice along the vine brook. And it'd be kind of great if you could kind of continue that all the way around. But you'd have to do a lot of cleanup back there, and it's very unsightly. So, you know, maybe what we should do, because I know we did the last time, was a sidewalk of the place. And I think that'd probably be helpful if we did that again, to get just a visual on it. Thank you, Matt and Chair.
Member Pemba?
Thank you. So one of my concerns, Barbara had already, or a couple have been talked about already, but Barbara, one of my concerns, and I think I brought it up, one of the last projects that went through, is more connectability between this, you know, the district and the mall. I really want to see something, because it doesn't, you drive, you know, in the parking lot of the mall, and it doesn't really, it's not so inviting between the two locations. And I feel like that would, you know, would be a very, a good compliment to each one of them, to have, you know, much better connectivity between them and make it more inviting for people to pass back and forth between them. That's one thing. Another one of my concerns, my questions Bill had already addressed as well, is were any of these buildings, I know they're going to, you know, I know you're talking about office, but you're talking about, you know, the life sciences. And are any of these buildings going to be mixed use and retail on the bottom? Because I think that's, you know, you had touched on that a little bit, and that was one of the things that I would love to see in here, is, you know, those buildings have some retail on the bottom. So you're, you know, you're having more reason for people to walk around the park, you know, versus kind of staying in certain areas and.
Yeah. If I could on that, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you, Joe, in terms of the, what you see in some more, perhaps, urban locations and whatnot. But, you know, one of the PDD limitations that we do have is it says that no more than ten percent of the total square footage of development can be dedicated to specific use is limited under the retail category. So our zoning, at the time, I think, you know, town meeting felt that, you know, they didn't want to have a PDD adopt it and then find out, we're going to make this, you know, another Burlington Mall, right? So they wanted to have it be so that it was going to be complimentary and part of an amenitized environment. So.
So ten percent of the buildings or ten percent of the land?
Ten percent of the total square footage of development.
Right. So you'll be developing square footage, right? So.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
So that would, I mean, you know, naturally, you should be able to grow the retail a little bit as well.
I'm just mentioning that there are limits in there.
I get that, yeah.
But for what it's worth.
So I guess one of my concerns is this, you know, with all the talk about office space not being as, in much in demand because of people working from their homes and things like that, evolving society, the way it's, the way it seems to be going. My concern is the fact that we've got a substantial amount of retail in Burlington. We've got a substantial amount of restaurants in Burlington. And, you know, and, you know, balancing the traffic with these things, you know, you've got to be concerned, we have to be concerned about the viability of these retail establishments and these restaurants. And, you know, the pandemic is kind of working against them in a way, because, you know, less people being brought in on a regular basis, like you said, and I don't know how much, I don't know how much the, bless you, you know, these numbers will come back, because we're now hypothetically talking about numbers coming back in the future, whether they will or they won't come back. You know, we need to kind of take that into consideration with the amount of restaurant space we have and a lot of retail space we have in the town. So that's a concern. I guess one of my questions would be that, you know, all of the restaurants that you've brought into that area, if you were to put this project, the current project, you know, your plans in front of them, what would their thoughts be about it? I don't.
About the project?
Yeah.
We've talked to a few.
Yeah.
It's been a resounding positive. Of course, they want, they want, they have the same concerns we have, we have the same concerns we have, that it was really key to the life science user. People that go to these, they go to work. So they're, they use the space less densely than an office user. And post-pandemic, post-COVID life, we know that the science has to be, you know, taken care of. It cannot be zoomed in to check your science. So the life science users come back. They come back to, this is part of why we want to kind of create this ecosystem, where we bring people back to the district. And we think that will then encourage the type of office user that wants to be a kind of, this kind of place where those, those people come back to the office. I think, not to be off topic, but we went to an office day out event and sort of really good talk about applied equality and office users really picking whether they're hybrid or not. So I think we want to be the winner of getting types of office users that have people come back to the office. And so I think creating the life science use and adding that mix creates a really nice dynamic and it sort of helps everybody, helps them. We had talked to the three property owners that are not within the PDD, but are neighbors along District Ave. And they're excited about it, too, because I think everybody would like to see people come back.
Right. So I guess, you know, which, which leads to the question of taking down a substantial amount of office space to create, you know, life science space, which is much less densely populated, you know, people-wise. And not that, you know, I should be happy about the traffic part of it, but I don't, I don't really have been down in that area, you know, on different parts of the day. And I don't really see any traffic issues down there.
It depends on what I've wondered. We did a little internal traffic parking count over the course of four months, just to see how our current campus, which is ninety-five percent, we compare that to some parks out there. And it seems like it's really popular Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and even it has gotten more popular. We stopped counting cars, but just in a little league, it's getting more popular, especially Wednesday. But we're just trying to, and that's, you know, trying to keep up with the programs as well. And why we want to be intentional about how we also park and think about parking for the.
Lab life science use, it's hard to do that remotely, right? So they do need to come in and be.
Right.
Which I think appeals to some of the retail and the restaurant destinations that without, you don't have folks that aren't necessarily doing meetings by Zoom or, you know, that, so I think it does help in that regard.
It's just that. Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, I guess, taking down office, which is fully built up, I mean, fully occupied right now, and then occupying that same amount of space with less densely populated, you know, it's, it's, it's great, it's a great concept, traffic wise and everything like that. But over time, as a town transitions into life science, there's got to be a good balance. There's got to be a good mix, you know, so.
It's pretty busy over there. I frequent that Starbucks and Chipotle across the street. It's pretty, the traffic there and the attraction has picked up a ton the last year or so.
And the parking space.
It's impossible.
Now, where? You're talking about it.
Well, like.
Yeah.
And, yeah, around that area in general, you see a lot of people, a lot more people coming in and out of the district area.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's some great restaurants. That Black and Blue was one of our favorite restaurants. It's a great.
Something you said, though, in terms of retail on the bottom or even mixed use, it sparked something, because my prior job, I'd, I'd worked at Care.com, and we really studied, obviously, throughout COVID, the impact of childcare and what that does to people going back to work. And so I would say it would be super interesting as a part of this, in terms of how you might enable childcare options in that space. I think that would draw a lot more traction to people coming back to work in that space. I think even perhaps people working at Leahy, where, you know, nurses, it's extremely difficult with the type of hours they work with childcare. And attracting that, I think, would be an interesting mixed use. And then the other thing, too, was enabling fitness. And, I mean, you're talking about enabling fitness and wellness outside, but how can you, through your development, enable fitness and wellness even within the park? You know, I think about my, one of my doctor's offices is in Chestnut Hill in an area where they have a lot of mixed use. They have office-based doctor's offices, they have Equinox, they have, you know, Soul Cycle, they have restaurants. And so, and you really see a lot of people kind of gathering there and interacting there. So I, maybe it's not retail, but I think considering how people can continue to get a lot of, out of this space would be interesting.
Just on that point, because it happens to be within our building.
Sure.
If there was a sidewalk, you could look at it through the window. But there is a very robust health club, fitness facility.
Is it open to the public?
It's not open to the public, but it's open to anyone that's an employee within the park. So it's in our building, it's in the lobby of our building. And actually, I think it would rival any of those types of fitness centers that other office parks have in terms of what they offer. You know, there's a yoga workout room that's separate from the main, you know, fitness area. They've got a bunch of treadmills, elliptical machines and all that. So I think that's helpful to kind of internalize, keep people onsite and minimize people going out to do that in another location necessarily. So, but I think at one point, you guys did have a, was there a spin studio there for a little bit?
There was.
Yes.
It seems like that's, some of these, some of these are a fan, right?
It is.
Yeah. So.
Member Nataula or member Covino, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Sure. Bernie Covino, I would agree with Barbara that it would be good if we could see that silver lead building could come up at least a step. And I have a question on the additional parking that you're banking right now. If you find a need for that parking, would you, do you add stories or, or building footprint? I couldn't follow it on the plan, sorry.
We have both. So parking garage B on the east side can expand horizontally, and then the existing parking garage twenty-four hundred can expand vertically. And both. then the existing Parking Garage 2400 can expand vertically. And the existing 2400 was designed to do that, meaning it has all the structure and foundations.
And while we're on that, I know that when we were talking, the five over, five over five building that we had permitted before, we were concerned about how the the walls of the garage would look, whether there'd be any kind of ivy planting or, I think on that one, there were actually some vertical slats or something going in. Have you given consideration to the aesthetics of the outside of the garage?
We have to a certain degree. We know that it's in a prominent location, especially the, the one all the way to the south, will need to treat the spandrels. We've just finished a parking structure with National Development in Watertown, where it is all poured concrete, but it has a kind of board finish to it all and came out very nicely. Has a very, totally glass-enclosed elevator core, so everybody feels safe, but also just provides a little bit of activity.
Is that at the Arsenal or?
No, it's 99 Coolidge.
In case we went over.
Mine, Auburn, that used to be.
Okay, thank you. I had thought that, that we had talked about the, the walk along the brook being continued to the back of the old parking garage. Is that still going to happen or, or not?
Yes, it's still, and we plan to do that, I think, as part of our obligation over the prior approval. It needed to happen first, where it had to happen with either one of those buildings. We plan to do that as part of the first phase here. I think the difference is that what we're proposing in this plan, it's more expanded, it's basically more green space around that path, and then it's longer and connects behind the 800. So those pieces, the depth of it, the length of it was shorter than the prior plan.
Okay, this is even better. Thank you. And. One other last question to Vinod, and more curious question than anything else, Vinod, and that's, actually, just aside for a second, what comes into my mind is Vinod had to miss a meeting way back when, maybe, maybe 20 plus years ago, because I think one of his children was, his wife was having a baby that day, so.
Wow.
I was thinking that child must.
That doesn't remember that.
That was, yeah, that was, that was quite a while ago.
But just a curious question. Now that we have this super-duper fantastic traffic control system, which I really do think made a big, made a difference, as far as I'm concerned. I know getting from my house to, to where the market basket is, to try and cash a check and, and realizing I had to stub up the check instead of the check with me and going back home and getting back over there in like 20 minutes was something I would have never done when I first moved into town. But irregardless, for your traffic counts, were you able to go to DOT and get counts right off the existing traffic signals, or did you have to stand out there, or how does that work? Really?
Actually, it's, it's.
When DOT implemented their adaptive system, unfortunately, they did not implement the traffic counting technology at all 28 locations. So there are a few of them where the technology exists, but none within the study area that we are looking at. But the new data collection, though, is not, it's not manual, it's all with cameras and there's cloud-based software that, that uses the camera feeds and it converts that into traffic counts. So it's still high-tech, but not, not from the DOT system.
Just curious. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Member Natola, did you have any questions or things you want to add?
Yes, I do. I have a quick question. When you spoke about the park that's going to be back where 700 is in the Little Stage, is that just for the Executive Park to use or the residents of Burlington?
That is for the Reswill to, it would be a public open space. The park is really between Building C and Building B, towards the middle of the, of the overall campus. But the intention would be, it would be just treated like typical public open space. So users of the park, people could visit it, they could walk the vine roof, they could be, they could be in the park, so it'd be open in the public.
Quick thing?
Sure. It's actually, beating off of what Tony just asked, I've been curious, I've been thinking about this, as you presented, where you have the park in between the two buildings and it, it makes sense for the people working in those buildings. But if your intent is to create a more active space with people who live in town as well as people who work there using that space, I wonder why it's set back that way. And, you know, I'm probably not supposed to say this, but for example, at Third Ave, there is a public space. It's, it's on the street where the restaurants are, and people naturally gather there because they can see it when they're having dinner. This is not going to be visible to people who are going there for Main and Manny or Press Cafe or any of the other restaurants that are along that street. They can't see it. So it's going to be harder for you to draw them there. You're going to have to create events and you're going to have to advertise them in order to get people to walk behind that big building because they can't see it. Have you, did you think about that and possibly putting the open space closer to the street?
We did do, I think, close to 11, 11 to 12 scenes for just that block. And I know we came out with Melissa and with Liz and him, we sort of talked through this, we talked through this with Chris a few times. And I think one of the visuals we tried to create with our renderings to show how, even though it's not like up there, it's District Ave, we've been trying to really activate District Ave, that complete street, street scale connectivity there. But we, it's really not too far away. I know it seems like those are very big buildings and it's different than it is today, but we believe that it's going to feel interconnected and it's going to be drawn there. And we also talked about, I think we touched on it lightly, about the concept of a little bit of wayfinding, just so that people know that there's other attractions, that there's, that there's a vine roof that you can walk to and there's a couple of, so we're thinking through how to kind of create that activity. I think we feel people will know that it's there and it will create its own place and draw people to it. We feel that they will come and have a concept. I don't know. But I, I don't think they're completely headed in the wrong. I don't think they hold that image, but.
It might be interesting to think about, and maybe you can show us some renderings of what the view would be, because I think if people can see what's happening there, even if it's at, at an angle or something, it would help to draw people there. If it's completely blocked by the building, it will be harder to get people there. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I think if you put pickleball courts in there, I think you'll have plenty. I'm not joking. I mean.
I know you're not.
We have a problem in town because we have our current courts right near neighbors and it's very noisy. So we're looking to partner with, you know, large developments like this, just like, like miter with the miter field, to put in some pickleball courts, not near neighborhoods. And then it would, would activate not only the people that work there, but certainly bring in many, many other folks for your park. And then after they play pickleball or before, have their breakfast or lunch or have a cocktail afterwards is, is, is something that's very common for, for that particular group. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to end with just one last thing. You know, I know, or I believe folks from Leahy Park over in that area, is that correct? Do they park over there? Does Leahy folks park over there?
I don't think that they have a parking arrangement.
No, I think many years ago, they were making conversations. But I did check in on that with our asset management team and they have not reached out recently. So there hasn't been a dialogue that I'm aware of. I can double check, but that's what I heard.
If you could, that would be great. You know, and then, you know, whereas we talked about connectability, you know, potentially with Leahy and potentially with the mall, and then, you know, kind of where this, this property sits is not only in the Simon area, but Macy's area. I'd be interested to see if there have been any conversations and, you know, what came to be with those conversations about connectivity, about, you know, kind of the development of, of this space. I know, obviously, you don't need their permission by any means, but, you know, kind of that good neighbor relationship. So you definitely have a lot of, we have a lot of work to do. And this is an amazing presentation, I, I think that we have.
Yeah.
We still have a lot to consider. So, you know, reserving the right to come back and add more.
Are we going to have a subcommittee and/or sidewalk?
I was getting there.
Great.
Please schedule a sidewalk and send out a doodle poll and see what works for folks. As far as a subcommittee, any takers?
Oh, I definitely want to be on it. I'm just wondering if maybe everybody's going to want to be on it and then it's not a subcommittee anymore.
Okay. So, well, I think that we have a development agreement, subcommittee as well.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be, so, in speaking with, you know, myself and economic development, we want to bring in, usually it's just been kind of planning board members, we wanted to bring in a bigger group of people to think about it holistically.
So why don't we send out an email on who wants to do what?
Shotgun, I want it.
Okay.
Auburn's all yours.
Well, I mean, someone else too.
Obviously. But I don't think we need to make that decision right now unless somebody else wants to jump in.
I will definitely reach out and we'll do a doodle poll for the sidewalk. We'll do a doodle poll for the subcommittee and, you know, let me know who's going to be there. But I think for staff, it would be helpful to have somebody that is available to kind of come to all the subcommittee meetings. I don't, I would prefer you guys not popping in and out, just for that reason, for our own sanity. So we'll, we can work that out.
Defining, you know, what day and time.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. That being said, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if anyone in the public, I don't know, is anyone participating?
I don't think that we're opening this.
No, it's a public hearing.
We do have to?
Yes, yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to have an input that has any comments, concerns, or questions? Seeing no one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing to the Planning Board meeting of April 6th, 2023.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
7-0. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Joe? Oh, yes, I have. Tony?
Yes.
Ernie? Madam Chair, I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of March 2nd, 2023.
Second.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Stay.
Natola?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
7-01. Oh, sorry, 6-01, math is hard.
For discussion purposes, we have the Blanchard Wheel, Blanchard Wheeler next public meeting.
So we just wanted to give a plug for that, that the next public meeting will be eight, on April 26th, but this, which is a Wednesday, from 7:30 to, 6 to 7:30 on Microsoft Teams. And the, we had a really great public, previous public meeting with, with a great turnout. There's a lot of active residents in that area who really want to see this quarter become more than just kind of a windy back road. They want bike lanes and walking paths. And we have a great asset, the Mary Cummings, and a lot of employees work there. So I expect that this will be a really, a really good public meeting. And the, our consultant team with VHB is going to kind of give their findings and what, and what they're proposing and come up with kind of recommendations for us. So that will be, that will be great. The other thing, and I, moving on to the next discussion item, so I heard back from Mr. Leepwitz, who came here at a previous meeting to talk about Common Craft. He did, you know, he was totally amenable to adding trees. I know, Joe, you wanted him to add trees out front because he's expanding his, his outdoor space. He promised them, but his property owner was not, was not in agreement with that. So we're going to see, he's going to provide us with different options. And with a letter from his property owner, and he's agreed to that. And he will be coming back at our next meeting to present options.
Who's his property owner?
Simon.
So here's the thing, there's, there are two trees that he, that apparently we were unaware of or that wasn't presented in the original, in the original hearing. So he had proposed adding one tree. And the one tree would be over near kind of like the, the purchase area for where you would, you'd like the, the takeout beer section. I, I still think that maybe he can do better. I don't see why we can't put trees and planters or provide other options. I think he needs to have a discussion with Simon and see what's, what's the best, you know, the best scenario. And then he can come back to staff and then we'll figure it out from there. EverSource.
EverSource. So I went to Ways and Means last night. We voted unanimously in favor. And while I was there, I know Bill and Caleb were at the EverSource outreach meeting, which happened at the library. And I was hoping that one of you could kind of give us a quick overview of what that was and how it went, and your thoughts about, you know, just how, how it's going thus far.
I'll start and hand it over to Caleb. I personally thought it was a really good outreach meeting. They were very, very well prepared. They had a number of community folks on their side that have done this before. They got some good examples of, of other sites that they were similar and looking at kind of some fencing around. I would say there was a good representation from the town. There was land use, there was Caleb Conservation, there was Chamber of Commerce.
There was, yeah, and then a representative from Ken Gordon's office.
Office, and one neighbor.
One.
So, you know.
That shocks me.
Again, the outreach, maybe we can, you know, have this presentation that they gave, and I'll pass this around for you folks if you want to take a look. I'll start with you, Joe, and we can have it go that way. I thought it was very well done.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, I was able to contact them today.
Perfect.
So I can send that to all the board members tomorrow.
I can post it on our site, I'll put it on Facebook or something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I think they were very well prepared. You know, it's a benefit to Burlington. What I was thinking, as they were doing that, and they had this beautiful fence that was going around, the one that they're proposing, why couldn't we have that on Millsex Turnpike? So we may want to approach them to say if they could do it here, you know, why can't they do it there? Because we actually, I think we asked them about it.
We asked them several times.
And they said it was impossible.
We did.
You're right, Bill.
Yeah, so maybe some of that. But Caleb, any other additional thoughts to that?
No, I think that the main takeaway from it, from my end, was they're not trying to pull permits tomorrow. This is still basically years, like a year, at least a year away from doing any sort of permits with the town, with the state. So this, at this time, they're really just trying to get as much input from Burlington, particularly the Butters, but any sort of residents who have any, any opinions or anything they want to add about this project to make sure that it works for this community, because they explained the necessity for it. And that made, that made sense that, of explaining why. And it's just kind of making sure that what they, what they then produce will work for Burlington, because this is going to be here for a while.
What pre-synthesis?
This is.
Are we allowed to say where it's going to be now, or are we still?
I mean.
I think we should.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think.
It is.
So it's, it's going to be around, as you come down Locust Street.
Right off Sierra Way.
Yeah, right there. As you come down from the middle school side of Locust Street, off of when, right as you hit Dead Man's Curve, right there. Right as you come around, if you, if you came straight through Dead Man's Curve, it's going to be right in front of you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll reach out to present one to town meeting members, because I think if they're not aware of it, I think that they should be aware of it. And that's a good opportunity for them to speak to their constituents.
This is the map on, here. This, it's slide eight in that presentation. This is Sierra Way right here, the end of it. And then these are the power lines. So this is, and then this, this dark shaded spot is, is where they're going, their, their proposal would be.
Where is, is that curve in the lower left?
Lower right, offside to the right.
This is Locust Street right here. This is Sierra Way, and then this is the power lines, and then the dark blue shaded.
Sierra Way is a small little subdivision of 2001?
Yes, right here, here. Where my cursor is.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And they do have, they did for, for people to reach out, that they have this slide, that they have a phone number, they have an email address, and then they also have this where, where you can sign up for, I think they said it would be a monthly mailing list or kind of just as they have updates, they can come right to you. And I'm sure that that has more funding information. So we, we can share this out and share this with you guys, so you can share with any, anybody who might be in that area who. can share with any, anybody who might be in that area who would want to know about this.
I think it's imperative that we get the word out now, so that it doesn't come to us, you know, on our agenda.
And that is what EverSource wants as well, to make sure of that.
Okay, so, last, board pictures, so.
We haven't had a board picture since before the pandemic, and I've been like, yeah, we need a board picture, the website is very outdated.
The board is way more on top of it with board pictures.
I know, I know, so we are going to put it out there April 6.
Everybody put on your best.
Put on your best, on your best, you know, outfit, and we will.
Sort of next meeting.
Next meeting, yeah.
Great, I have one quick thing.
Sure.
I, at, one of our previous meetings, I don't remember, was the last one, or one before, I mentioned that we were putting out bids, or putting out requests for bids for the work at the Sculpture Park. We do have a few bids, not many, and they were really high, so we actually are going back to the drawing board, and we're going to hopefully do this project with Shashin. We're reaching out to Shashin, we're going to have a meeting at the Sculpture Park with one of the gentlemen there who's in charge of that program, and hopefully get it done, and it's, you know, a benefit to the kids, it's a benefit to us because it saves us a lot of money, and they do wonderful work. I've worked with them once before in a project at Francis Wyman, and it was very impressive, they did a great job, it takes longer, we would not be able to start that probably until the fall, but I think it would be worth the wait. Yeah. Great. Does anyone have anything else? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Chairman Rappaport?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Impemba?
Yes.
Natola?
She said yes.
She said yes, Sutherland?
Yes.
Passes, the motion passes.
Right.
Have a great night.
Great, thank you.